Share the governance committee, any hold and call being ordered. However, we do not have another voting member present. So I'll pause for a moment. Check to see if anyone is about to.
It looks like some people are having a hard time getting on, so just move tight first. Hold on, I'm gonna troubleshoot with a couple. Oh, no. The Carl is now officially online.
With a second member on board, we'll go ahead and begin the meeting. The two members present, myself and Carl Davidson on line, and we'll go around the room.
Andrew Ball, employee relations, Ari Lang, chief human resources.
Andy Ratlow, chief financial officer.
Jim Anderson, chief operating officer.
Amanda Foster, executive assistant to the board. I think Dr. Bryant is joining online right now as well. And Kelly Lessens, board anchor.
Thank you very much. First item for discussion is policy review. Policies 1114, 1120, 1140, and 1130. Relating to social media. Public involvement, school board needing responsibilities of the school board. And citizen advisory committee. My knowledge, no one has any changes that brought forward revisions. Anyone have anything they wish to bring forward?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any changes, and I would propose that we move on as no changes were submitted.
Can you start again, Carl, if you're there, thank you.
Oh, sure. Yeah, okay. So yeah, not a problem. I didn't see any proposed changes attached to the agenda, and as we're trying to be more timely with having appropriate amount of time to review any proposed changes, and I don't have any proposed changes, I would just propose that we move on from this agenda item with no changes suggested at this time.
Moving to item two, board policy 0411 revisions relating to service animals. And this is brought by Mr. Lang.
Yeah, I think this was on the policy review list in the first meeting in August. Board president requested that it be pulled and reviewed for revision. We do have a couple of revisions that we're suggesting that essentially bring this in line with current federal law. I wouldn't characterize any of these as major changes. There are some minor language changes. So I'll pause there if there are any questions about what the administration is proposing in those language changes.
Any questions about the administrative guidelines? So I don't know if we're there yet or not. That's what I would support, though.
Yeah, there were, there were two questions, large questions, I think, that came up when we discussed this in August. One was about comfort animals and one was about classroom pets. After I was able to touch base with Andrew, who has a lot of history with these documents, I learned a couple of things. Once you have this pretty extensive guidelines handbook in notification form, it does cover the difference between a service animal and a comfort animal. So it is noted there. My proposal would be to take these guidelines once finalized with any changes to the policy and upload this as an AR, so it's also a publicly viewable document. The second question around classroom pets is not covered in this specifically, but we do have a risk management manual where we cover what is allowable and disallowed as a classroom pet in our schools. And so right now, I think upload that as an artifact because it is going under a revision by risk management, but there is a, you know, a pretty detailed section on that topic that we could probably, I don't know if it would be appropriate that as an AR here, but it was our more specific question.
Yeah, well, it was. I mean, I thought that they were really thorough and helpful. In our, for one second, President Bellamy has joined the meeting.
And so Gus, this is really just also in person.
It was on page two of the ARs where it says pets and therapeutic or comfort animals are not service animals and are not allowed in district facilities. And I wondered if maybe that needed additional clarification. I recall being a Polaris after faculty member passed and I saw like a comfort dog walking away, having have been on, like a comfort therapy dog had been on site specifically to help greet students and faculty members. And I know that there are also like programs, therapy dogs that do like read to a dog programs. So I just, I wonder if there is a way that you could, rather than say therapeutic comfort animals are not service animals and are not allowed in district facilities, could we expand on that therapy dogs maybe are allowed for, under certain circumstances? I guess I just, that seemed like a closed, very closed statement, whereas perhaps there's a time and space for therapy.
I absolutely agree with that. I mean, I've had situations where I was a principal where we had a student suicide at the chaplain's brought in with therapy dogs, and they're incredibly powerful in terms of just the impact they have on kids and helping them manage those difficult situations. So I think the intent here is the individual comfort dog, so we can certainly look at adding some clarifying language there to differentiate between when we bring them in for programmatic use versus this is my individual comfort dog that I would like to accompany.
Yeah, I think that would just be helpful.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that. I think the intent with the guidelines is to, like Marty said, keep it from individuals trying to access a comfort animal. So we have had that happen a number of times, and we've kind of put it under that risk management model of classroom aides or group aides, but it could be spelled out better here.
President Bellamy also has a question online.
President Bellamy?
Good morning. Thank you. So I think what I'm, I think I'm, I was late getting on, but I think I'm the one that asked us to just relook at this. And part of that, you know, there's no prob, I have no problem with service animals, as long as everybody is clear on what constitutes a service animal and what does not. I don't have a problem with therapeutic animals because they are there for a purpose to deliver a service. The concerns that I get most often from parents and some kids is wanting to have their pets at school. So, and our policy does not distinguish between pets, therapeutic, and service animals. And so unless I'm missing it. You know, I, I, I get that unless we want everybody to be able to bring their pet to school. I don't think we do. That, that, that raises, that, that presents a huge risk. But if some in, in, in our learning communities are allowed to bring their pet animals to school or to work, then, then I think we need to just figure out when, what, what does that, what does that risk entail? And put some guardrails around it. So I, really, I, this, I, I, it, it's the pet piece of this. It's individuals without a disability that do not need an animal to perform a service that want to bring that, their, their pets to school. And it's usually the adults, it's not the kids, because we don't let the kids do it. But adults do it. And so I just think we need to figure out the risk associated with that and whether or not, and how we want to navigate that. It shouldn't be up to individuals to decide whether they can and cannot bring their, their pet to school. So that's, that's, that's my, that's my concern.
Madam President, I don't know if you were on yet when I was first explaining that. I think that is in the guidelines, pretty clear that comfort animals are disallowed. And then in the risk management guide, it is also very clear that individual pets are not allowed other than under some very specific circumstances, and that the risk management manual also covers what's allowable in terms of classroom pets. And so I guess the question I would have is whether or not you wanted to look specifically at adding language at the policy level?
No, 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 not at.
In the manuals or guidelines, and then I think there's certainly a training component that we haven't touched on in a while. And we have slated for one of the general leadership sessions in the spring to cover this topic with principals, just as a reminder, because I don't think we've done so since we've come out of pandemic.
Okay, then, did I miss the, the risk management guidelines? Did I miss those? Were they attached to the agenda?
I mentioned I didn't attach them because they're going under a substantial revision. The risk management department, that's one of the projects they're working on right now. And so we would probably attach them as an AR or make sure that at least principals are reminded of them once that document is fully drafted and completed.
I'm, I'm good. Thank you. I appreciate it, Marty and Andrew. Thank you.
And just if you have a chance to make, to, to reread the administrative guidelines, pages two and three are very explicit about what is a service animal? How do you distinguish between a service animal and a non-service animal? It, it really spells things out very effectively.
Okay. And I'm, I'm glad to hear the training for the adults. Again, it's, it's the adults who bring their pets or comfort animals to school that, that is a concern for me. So thank you.
And to be sure I'm following procedure, we simply review to get the administrative guidelines. We don't vote on them. So certainly, I would say we accept these, and then there may be further clarifications later as the administration deems appropriate. But there are changes to 0411 that we need to vote on or need to pass through the board. So the chair would entertain a motion that we accept the proposed changes from the administration to board policy 0411 and forward that to the board for consideration.
Mr. Chair, this is Carl. I would support and make a motion to pass the 0411 revision to the full board for review and vote.
Nice second.
Seconded, any further discussion?
Yeah, I think that the only two voting would admit was here for this committee, you and Paul, so you said it not.
Oh, so to, to member Higgins' point of order, Mr. Chair, I just happen to know this because I just did a deep dive on it. Our board policy says the board president is a ex officio member, and per Roberts rules, ex officio members can vote unless the bylaws of an organization state otherwise. And so technically, the president can vote in second motions. We may want to revisit that at some point, but that technically is how it works in Roberts rules. And it just happens to benefit us today because we're missing a committee member, so it makes things easier, to be honest.
We won't revisit that today for certain. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing here none. If there's no objection, this will be sent to the board with a recommendation to adopt. Moving on to item three, operations and audit committee.
We don't have a pronounced, just conversation. Mr. Anderson's gonna leave.
But is there a, the specific motions to create a committee, another committee?
I think the discussion today is something being offered in lieu of a committee, is my understanding. President Bellamy, correct me if I'm wrong, please. Oh, you're muted.
So yes, what's before us is the original recommendation that was brought forward by, I think, member Higgins. And I think I, Dr. Bryant, did you have a a comment on that before, before I, before I offer a substitute motion, a substitute recommendation?
Sure, Madam President. Hopefully my audio is coming out okay. So as I've stated before during this discussion, we're neutral on this policy discussion around adding an audit committee. As I've shared before, the administration will conduct audits regardless of a change to bylaws. You know, this seems to be a discussion between the board about whether or not there's a desire to add the additional responsibilities of auditing additional functions. And I will state that, yeah, as fiduciaries, of course, the board reviews financial and P卡 audits. Right now, the administration is focused on a benefits audit. So all that to say is that regardless of any change, the administration will continue to focus on audits, and should there be some sort of counterproposal or adjustment to the current proposal, we're certainly happy to work with the board to determine additional audits that are of mutual interest or of interest to the board.
Okay. Mr. Chair, may I continue? Or actually, I can wait until the, the, the actual recommendation is member Higgins, if he wanted to address it before I continue, that would be, that, that probably is more.
Tell that member Higgins speak first.
I'll just speak to it briefly. In the past, the board has had an operations audit committee. And they've called it an audit committee without operations, and they had finance committee separate. So making it, making it clear is the reason why we just had operational audits committee, because they've always been two different committees. And, and the intent here is to work with Council of Greater City Schools, which provides audits at a very low price effectively within, it provides a third party review with the board being a, a member to talk about the type of audit, and we can participate in the scope. But beyond that, we're not involved in conducting the audit itself at all. That's something the administration and the audit committee from the Council of Great City Schools would be doing. We've done that in the past. Those doc, those audits, some of those past audits are on the, on the file out there or on the internet, you can see, and they've been very effective. They've saved a lot of money. They've addressed some, some issues in line with it. The key thing of the audit is that we play a role in the scope of the audit, though. We have a chance to say, these are issues we'd like to have objectively reviewed and considered in conducting the audit. It provides a review of the audit without, I mean, it's, it's an alternative. We can go to the, to the ombudsman, make a public request, raise issues, do things, but without looking at the scope of it. It's not really addressing the problem. It's sort of trying to fix the blame or fix the issue or doing something else. It's not constructive. And for that reason, the operations audit committee would work directly with the administration. It would be something that the audits would, something to share with the board to get their support before we go forward with the audits. But the idea is that it would be a third party objective review with top people in the country, different school districts that come in here, and we're paying per diem and travel. Not bad. So we pay a very low cost and we get it. Right now, you're right, there are audits being done, but the scope of that audit is an issue to me because we're not in there and the, and the feedback back. So what we're looking for is playing a role in the audit, giving a chance to have the board to say scope, working with the administration with that, and then knowing you're going to get the results of the audit back to the board, not just to the administration. And in the past, this has been very effective. I think we've worked with some great results within it, and the scope and the number and the type is something the board would be involved in. It doesn't mean that the administration would not conduct any other audits they want in any other way, shape, or form. That's not limiting the administration from doing what they want to do. But there were some significant issues out there from my perspective, and this provides a third party inexpensive review process. And that's all we're shooting for, is the same thing that used to be in, in the board on a regular basis within it. But you go back to the nineties, they wanted to do an audit of every department every three, every three years because they found it so effective just to take a a review of it, to see what they can do to improve things. So I'm not advocating something like that, but I am advocating that we need to look at the review process. I will mention that the issue with the health insurance is a good example with an audit type review. But that came with a push from the, from the board, I think, on the issue, this is a problem. I, I was pretty vocal on it. And so if an audit had been done of that general nature, we would have discovered it if we didn't hear about it. And so those are the types of things that an audit does. It's not just going into a department where there's an issue or concern. It's going in and having an objective review. How can we better serve the people we are providing services to? And how can we best control our expenses with public funds to do that and get, and get credibility with the public and not just credibility, but factually that we've done a good job of managing the dollars. And that's a role of the board.
To keep that open.
Oh, yes, quiet.
Member Higgins, are you done?
Yes.
Member Bellamy, you wanted to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I don't disagree with member Higgins. I don't. His, the recommend, his recommendation calls for a separate committee. Except I do disagree on having a separate committee. What I would like to do, but I agree with everything else, I would like to propose a substitute recommendation to member Higgins. Or whatever, however you want, however, at least to, to, to get it shared. Amanda, I did send it to you by email, and you may, if you can pull it up, that would be great. I'm sorry.
When did you send that?
Just now, I'm sorry.
So are you good with me reading up the email for everyone to see?
Yeah, and, but I, I think I can speak to it while you find it. It's, it should be right in at the top of your box. So I, like, as I said, I do agree, and, but, but I, I would like to offer just a, 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 a slightly different approach to this. That the superintendent will develop an audit plan to review all district departments and operations. This audit plan will include input from the governance committee and will include the following details. A list of proposed departmental and operational audits for the superintendent that superintendent proposes to be conducted each school year. A timeline for each proposed audit. The cost of each proposed audit. The proposed scope of each proposed audit. Whether the audit can be provided by the Council of Greater City Schools auditors. And then once an audit is complete, the auditor's findings and recommendations will be provided to the superintendent and shared with the governance committee. The governance committee and the superintendent will present a final report with recommendations to the full school board. So that, that to me provides the oversight, the access and the directions for the management and operational audit plan. So again, I'm not against member Higgins' proposal. I actually like it. I just think it needs more, it needs more guidance and direction, and it needs to be, it needs to be in the superintendent's lane with our oversight. So that's what I would propose. Consider.
Number Watsons, number Higgins.
I just, I wanted to, I like using the Wayback Machine in, in Word docs. You can search for prior. There used to be master lists of audits. I'm looking at one from April of 2015. There was a master list of audits from accounts receivable to, you know, sort of all the way through vehicle maintenance, so A to Z. It went by audit area, the last audit date, the source of the audit, how frequently it would be done. It didn't have a prospect attached to it, but I think that there's value in, in recreating or resurrecting that and also making that available, you know, to the public in some kind of an ASD audits webpage. Maybe that already is available somewhere.
Do you have a webpage that has our audits on there?
Okay, so people could access.
They're after the fact. They're not like what's going to happen two years from now, three years from now.
Okay.
It's a completed audit.
Got it.
Are those financial audits or operational?
It covers a lot of things. There, there are usually more things that are process oriented. When you use someone like the Muni's external auditor, they're really good at saying, okay, this is what you're supposed to be doing. Then they go validate whether you're actually doing that, yes or no, and then they do a sampling error where it's, you know, generally plus or minus 3%. And, and then help find those areas where within your system, what you thought was happening, what isn't really happening. Or, or maybe it is, but they're, they're generally subjective audits, which, you know, those are good and bad, where they're only looking for where are the breaks in the systems. And so when the administration gets those, we look, we, obviously, we talk with the auditors throughout three or four months as the audits are being done, and generally, most of the things have already been corrected by the time the board gets briefed. But we also find areas that are strengths that don't end up in something like an external audit. That, that maybe you, you push that strength a little more in certain areas. So you can cover a lot of different areas through the external or through the Muni's auditor where things like the council, like this thing gets, can, can really get narrowed down, is it might be that we want to look at something like special, special education organization, where the actual experts might be a contract instead of council of great city schools. Because when you do the council, you're going to get guys like the four chiefs here and Charlie Schiff of a special ed or something like that. But it may be that an audit would be a combination of a council of great city schools and then some more technical piece, like when we audited transportation, the council wouldn't have been the ones that helped us decide the transfinder of, like, our, our old Versitrans really wasn't functioning the way it was supposed to. So we were able to look at multiple different platforms and then look within those platforms as to what would best suit ASD and then those modules that you'll see coming. So there's, whereas if you had just had me show up and Heather, where you said, well, you have a transportation system. So sometimes audits aren't just the council. And, and a, and a full-blown audit plan might be some combination of the 30,000 to 50,000 foot level that, that the council would give you. And then that deeper dive with somebody might be able to help us more. So I don't know, it, I, I don't think the council, we've done a lot of audits in the last couple of years. I liked the council audit, the last one that I went through, thought it was very helpful. But they're not the only solution out there. That's always the best solution. That 50,000 foot level, that's what they give you. They don't give you the, the AA needs more training and this, and this platform doesn't do. That's not what they do. They're, they're broader, bigger in scale.
And then after member Higgins, President Bellamy has another question.
This proposal eliminates the role of the board being in the scope of it and in the tight waters of what we're going to do. We're not even participating. This is, gives the superintendent, it decides what audits are going to be done, the scope of it, and we don't have a role other than receiving the results. We get, this is what I'm going to do, and I'll give you the results. That is a serious issue to me. That's where the audit committee plays a key role because we work with the administration to say, let's talk about the scope. These are issues we've got to make sure they're included. The alternative is, like I said, go to the ombudsman and get an objective thing because we don't have to say, we, we want to make sure this is looked at. The issue of employees got concerns and raising them, talking to the school board members or anything else. There's a problem here, in my opinion, but we need to look at it objectively. There's a problem here, in my opinion, but we need to look at it objectively. But in the absence of that, what are we gonna do? I don't have an option. This doesn't give us any ability to even have a communication other than hear from the administration. This is what I decided. This is what the limit of it will be. I've got concerns about the about the health audit, for example, the questions I have. And we will not participate in that. That, to me, eliminates an audit committee. You you've done away with the audit committee. All you're saying is that please superintendent, tell us what the results are at the end. Uh, and that's just, that's the scope of the role of the board. We are not doing anymore. And we're gonna audit only what the superintendent wants us to audit. I find that very objectionable. I don't think we're providing the oversight that we've talked about. This is just uh doing away with the audit committee proposal.
Member Bellamy, President Bellamy?
So, yeah, my, I I I I think that um, you know, the way we do audits in the finance, I I I really struggle that this is even being separated from finance committee where all the other audits are. Uh, but in deference to member Higgins' um uh desire to have a formal audit management and operations audit plan, uh, I do not see that. I I I I just think that um we need to have a we need the superintendent to develop a plan that comes to the governance committee. And there will be details in that plan and I agree with um I think Mr. Anderson, that, you know, it might not be the Council of Greater City Schools. But 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 the the plan can specify who will do the audit and whether or not um the council can do it or whether we need the council and someone else to do it. So uh in, you know, I I don't see, I I just do not support a separate audit committee outside of the governance committee. I think the governance committee can have whatever influence it wants with the superintendent in reviewing his plan and approving the plan or not approving the plan and giving input. And when the findings come back, it would be the governance committee that would have the uh that would look at those results and present a public report on the findings. I I think that's within uh our, that's that, I think that's within, uh, it keeps us um as overseers of a process, but we are not the drivers of the process. And I I don't, I just don't think, absence having a separate public um ad hoc committee, I I just don't see the expediency for it. I do agree that it's necessary, though. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm putting myself in the speaking order and then member Higgins. Um, I I do recall the audits that that came up in the past and I I think it's important to keep them separated from finance because a lot of them aren't financial. They really are, Mr. Anderson said, process oriented. Are we doing things the best way? Or are we are we doing things completely? Um, a lot of them didn't necessarily address money at all. Uh, it was just about the way we went about things and and things like that. So I I unfortunately, I think, using the word audit, um, it just means something different in this context. Uh, the other thing is I I see the biggest role of the board is being oversight. And um the idea of a committee where we sit down and think about what needs to be looked at and viewed makes a lot of sense to me. It it's not the mindset that we come to governance with. We're more about our the board's processes, the board's policy. Uh, it's much more general. It doesn't fit finance at all, I think. Um, but the idea that that several members of the board and administration would sit down just with the idea of looking at different segments of the district to say, what what have we not looked at lately? What do we need to look at? Um, it, to me, makes a lot of sense in terms of our role as oversight and uh not day-to-day management, but very general management of the district as a whole. So I'm I'm gonna have to say, I agree with member Higgins that it needs to be an independent committee. Um, and I wouldn't want it to be an ad hoc committee. I want it to be established. Um, so that we do have real specific goals for what that committee is about. Um, so I'll say I support the original idea of an independent committee that looks at um reviewing our processes and structure and and things of the nature. And also agree that it doesn't always have to be the Council of Great City Schools. They might choose any number of uh of people to to actually perform the audit. And it should be in cooperation with the superintendent and the administration. They know, they know what's happening best, so I
Remember Jacobs would like to speak.
It it does sound like we we all kind of agree that these audits need to happen. Um, but more where where does the direct evidence come from and who's who's got the the uh final say on what does go forward and how we do it? Number Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I agree um with what's been said that uh there needs to be a deviation between financial audits and operational audits. Um, I did want to point out that Board Bylaw ninety-one thirty has a regulation that's attached to it that actually defines the the scope of our governance committee um that's existed before any of us joined the board and hasn't been amended since. Um, that states that the governance committee is responsible for drafting and rewriting ASD policies, managing the superintendent evaluation process and overseeing external management audits um and recommends changes in self-governance and practices to the board. So we our current practices indicate that this work should be going on in governance. Whether or not we have a special meeting of the governance committee specifically to do audit committee work um or whether we establish a separate committee and then revise that regulation, I am indifferent, but I agree the work needs to happen. So that's that's where I'm at. Um, but I do want to point out that our current governing document says this work should happen in governance.
Uh, well, no, I I appreciate the research on that. I've been that I've not read why the governance committee exists in some time. That might be something the chair would be well advised to do from time to time. Um, you know, my reaction would be that that perhaps we should consider a quarterly meeting of governance just for um operational reviews. And I think I'm gonna try to start calling them operational reviews rather than audits, just to to keep it clear. We're not talking about following dollars necessarily. Um, but again, to me, the idea that that for the members of the committee, the focus needs to be there that this is what we're thinking about right now. And and our meetings often have a rich variety of policy issues that come before from service animals to operational audits. Um, member Jacobs, did your hand go up again?
Uh, it did, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to second the idea of um out of out of a matter of expediency. Um, if we were to, you know, going down two potential roads that we have in front of us. One road has us play uh requesting President Bellamy place a item on the agenda um to formally approve a um a separate committee that that is roughly a month out at this point from from being a reality. The second is you as governance chair um setting a special um and regular quarterly meeting to perform audit committee work. Um, that wouldn't require a vote of the full board and is within your scope as as chair. Um, I'm okay in the interim, beginning that work as a member of the governance committee. Um, and then us grappling with separately whether or not we want the to amend the regulation and set establish a separate committee. But for me, what's most important is the work. So if we can get the work started sooner than later, that's my priority. So I would ask in the interim that we schedule at least the first quarterly meeting uh to begin talking about some of the the work that member Higgins is speaking about as to why he thinks the committee is important.
Yeah, but I don't know that quarterly is gonna be, you know, absolute because the board, because the administration will come forward and say, this is what we're doing. We need to follow up. So it might be more than one quarterly, but I like the idea of it not being a regular week monthly kind of thing. I don't have a problem with that. But I think that's something that it's gonna play out based upon whatever's going on and that's fine. I don't have a problem with calling it a management view, but it's interesting that I believe that the Council of Great City Schools refers to it as audits that they conduct and they use that term, not in the financial term, but in the as the manager review. It's an audit because that's a pretty common term that, like I said, the Council of Great City Schools use. And when it comes to whether it's the Council of Great City Schools or someone outside, I I, the only reason why I like putting the Council of Great City Schools in there, because that's something we can be directly involved with. The cost is not huge. But for us to direct an outside auditor, given the cost involved and all that, I would like to think that something like that would go back to the board or the working with the administration uh that they're taking a lead on that cost and proving that we go outside that or or at least having a role in that. Because I don't want to see a a million-dollar audit of something done uh without the administration playing a role. I really do see that as an implication. And I don't want to force an expensive audit on them. I would support them doing the audit uh obviously, if they wanted to do that. But I I just don't want us to see pushing it. That's why I tried to make it look like we're being cost-effective and the like. But I have no problem putting language in there for the Council of Great City School or other uh uh auditors uh uh as required.
Uh, member Bellamy and then Mr. White.
Uh, yeah, just to reiterate, I think uh uh, the audit is part of governance. It does not require a separate audit committee. We are the committee. Uh, that's my only clarification in in uh in 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 this whole process. So um, you know, we just, if we follow our or change them, we follow our policy or we change them. If if we don't want, if we don't want governance committee, the governance committee, to be in charge of audits, then we need to change that policy. Other otherwise, the governance committee is oversees the audits, the management and operations audits. It's as simple as that. And 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 so I I am not for uh my girl Bellamy, my vote would not be to add an audit committee. We are the committee. But I do like setting aside times to just do that work uh at some point in the future uh as decided by the committee. So thank you.
Uh, just wanted to add a point of clarification because we're currently working with the Council of Great City Schools on this benefit audit that'll take place in November. That they've actually shifted their language from audits. They now refer to these as strategic support team reviews or SST. So and I I I say that because I actually went to their site originally and looked searched everywhere for the word audit and could not find it and finally got this SST. What what the heck is this? So strategic support team review is their known quater these days.
And they probably charge you some more than that.
Forty thousand dollars is uh is the standard.
I I don't really have a cost with it, whatever you want to call it.
Just the money to watch.
But then you put a purpose is uh I you are, okay, that would do it.
I think it's because audits audits refer to extremely detailed type things where when you're thirty to fifty thousand feet, you're you're not looking for the one employee whose pay was off for a month. You're looking at systems and processes and and it's it's it is different in context as to what um finance gets. What it really is, I want to see every single person's pay for the month of May and look for the differences between what was put in this system to what came out of this system. It's just a different look.
Yeah.
But I I know that I can go with whatever, whatever they're calling it. Um, member Higgins?
I I know that uh at the last meeting, I know uh uh they calmly spoke in favor of the separate committee. I know there's different views on this coming to the full board. Let the let the board decide uh how we want to do it and that's fine. Uh, you can direct whatever you want to, but the board has the authority to do that. That's and that's fine with that. I just want to make sure that the board, when you're looking at the strategic, whatever the title is, uh review uh that the scope of that might include specific concerns and that comes from the board that make sure that that address, that is addressed and that is a key role that the board needs to play.
Anyone else? Um, as chair, what I'm gonna suggest is that I look for a time in late November, early this, uh earlier than December um for a special meeting of the governance committee um focused only on what I like to call operational reviews. We can come up with our own acronym. That won't be what the Council of Great City Schools calls it. Um, but yeah, I I also, I think what Mr. Anderson's saying, when you say audit, a lot of people expect a booklet with a lot of numbers in it and everything to balance out to the penny at the end. And it's not that either. And I think that's confusing for some people. Um, but I um, to me, the idea of the special meeting in governance would be to look at what audits we do and um give some thought to what what we're not looking at, what we need to look at, uh what resources are available from Council of Great City Schools, municipality or or other sources um to go forward with them. And uh and and part of it to me also is that there would just be a special time and place for those issues to be raised that that every three months or so, we're gonna sit down and talk about what what do we need to be looking at? We may or may not be looking at routinely. I I also want to throw in, when um Superintendent Bryant mentioned all the audits the administration does, I wanted to ask if the board sees the results of all those. Uh, but then as the discussion progressed, I also hesitate for the board to ask for that because I think the superintendent should be able to review things without necessarily having to come to the board to explain why he might have wanted to look at something. Um, I I think it'd create a speed bump to to him being able to look at it. But I would say that uh if those audits were routinely published and made available to us generally, um, that might be helpful as well. We we don't always necessarily know what you're reviewing. But I also hesitate to say that that you should have to reveal every single thing you look at in detail. Because that that I I think that's gonna be uh would inhibit free thought to some degree. Um, so what I'll do is ask if if that's agreeable to President Bellamy, to member Higgins, and uh both of them have their hands up, so I'll let them speak to it and uh see whether we got them here. Member Higgins?
Uh, so I don't see, I don't see why we wouldn't find out what audits have been conducted and what's been done or information. If it's public information available by Freedom Information Act, why we wouldn't get it unless and if it was anything confidential in there, they have the right to to redact it that way and exclude any reference to individuals and anything like that. But somehow that we can't get a review of that kind of nature is a little bit um, you know, concerning to me that I could make a freedom of my, I would like to know what audits you've done the last five years. I'd like to, you know, something like that is not a unreasonable request because that makes a difference on what audits we do going forward. Uh, and it makes a difference on what type of findings we've been using. So I I don't think that's the board is is overseeing the school district. They don't think we're like the enemy. Uh, maybe I am, but not the board isn't uh within that and within that. So I don't see that. And and the only other question is, will this be going to the board for approval, your approach? Or is this something that the governance committee does not intend to go forward? Because when they voted on seven oh, we go refer it to governance for review. I thought it was gonna come back to the board and the board makes the decision how they want to structure it uh as opposed to will it die here? And I can always bring it up in the board meeting, bring it up for a vote, because we've done that recently. And but I would rather have it coming as an agenda.
Uh, to respond to member Higgins, I um with the note that member Jacobs made about what the scope of the governance committee is, um, I think we could begin to do it. But I also think it'd be helpful if we do add the policy to clarify and perhaps establish the quarterly meetings in policy. Um, yeah, I I think this is something the board used to do more often than had a lapse. And in having it in policy, I think would add the structure to it. So I, in the short run, I don't see it coming to a vote. But I do see uh at least an amendment to policy, assuming people find that it works well. Uh, amending policy to clarify it and make sure it's there to be seen and really happens every quarterly. and make sure it's there to be seen and really happens every quarterly. And President Bellamy?
And then Member Jacobs.
And then Member Jacobs.
Sure, just briefly, did you want that to be a two-hour special meeting, the end of November?
Um, whatever it takes, but I.
For two hours, and if we get done earlier, then we're just done.
That, that's an excellent idea to make.
Thank you.
Yeah, Member Jacobs?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. To just to put a bow on the conversation, the two items I would suggest to be added to that two-hour agenda. One would be, um, an operational audit plan, which would mirror our financial audit plan that gets reviewed and passed by the full, uh, full board, which I think is a, a great accountability and transparency measure. And the second item, I think, um, governance should specifically deal with at that meeting, how it wants to proceed with Member Higgins' proposal. Again, I'm, I'm neutral as to whether or not we create a separate committee and revise our current and longstanding regulations, uh, or just continue with doing the work. Um, I don't, to me, the naming of the committee is less important than the work. Um, I think that's more bureaucracy and red tape and inefficiency than anything else. So I just want to get the work done and I'm, so I'm excited for the meeting to get scheduled. But I think those two items can be discussed in that special meeting and we can, um, resolve ourselves of having to continue the conversation here. Thank you.
Anyone else? Um, in a rather sort of order kind of way, um, what I've inclined to do then is not take action on the motions, but to schedule the meeting and, um, make sure we fully address concerns in that meeting in a reasonably timely way. Does anyone have objection to that? Okay, seeing none, we've, uh, the motions have been made in reference to this on the table and, um, I'll work with Amanda to schedule a date, uh, prior to the Christmas break, where, uh, we allocate at least two hours, um, but less than, that's not needed. And we will take it all up there.
And then we're gonna skip item four, we're gonna move it to December.
Okay. Hearing no objection, um, that's what we'll do. We'll move to item five, board policy, oh, five, one, oh, review. District report card.
I think you wanted to speak to that, right?
Yes, this, sure. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to it. This was brought up again in August, so this is the following up from that loose ends uh, in the annual review. And we had agreed to discuss it at a meeting, but I skipped over it one or two meetings ago. And the question that arose when I first saw this was, where is, have we produced a district report card recently? And when would they annually be produced? Where would they be disseminated? How, um, so, and I think that the conversation touched on, this might have been sort of, it just might have fallen through the cracks. So we might need to revise this policy so that the administration has specific guidelines. Or what should be produced, when and where?
Anyone wishing to speak?
Uh, Dr. Bryant?
Uh, Dr. Bryant?
Hi, thank you, um, Member Hallman. So my, uh, only comment on this would be, we've done some preliminary research and it seems in recent years on the website, the district has essentially used the deed, uh, data dashboard to give families and students an idea of how schools in the districts are performing. I, I'm not sure whether or not that type of data system existed when this policy was written. Um, I, I do wonder that because it does seem that the data that deed provides is fairly robust and potentially could be used as the district report card. Uh, but I'm certainly curious to know if there are board members that envision some other data point that the district could produce or has produced in the past that should be on the website. Um, based on my preliminary research, I didn't see any particular internal report card that shared metrics that are not currently on the deed website, but I defer to Mr. Gustafson if he has some additional comments.
That's, that's what we had looked at as well, what, what my team said when they went to look at this is, it's just pretty, pretty much, uh, going through the motions of providing the same exact information that deed was doing already. And that's, my, my understanding, it's been a number of years. Once deed started coming out with that, that, that's when the district stopped doing it.
And point of information, do we directly connect to the deed data? Or does someone have to know to go to the deed website as opposed to the testing website?
My take, I mean, I've tried to fuss around with the deed website. It is funky. It, I mean, it's, it's hard, it's not an intuitive, there's data everywhere in education and there's data everywhere at ASC and there's data everywhere at deed. Uh, but I don't know that it's really user friendly, um. And I think what really struck me is that deed does a, once, once you figure out how to get into their system, they do show things, um, like proficiency levels or, um, you know, you can get into data on the kindergarten readiness, um, the, the ADP that it profiled. Um, what it doesn't do is show how ASD is making progress towards those coals and guardrails. And that's, I think, something that, um, were we to produce our own report card, we could write the narrative in a way that's different than deed just reporting it, right? You can talk about context, you can talk about, I don't know, the state of the district. So I guess I see value to us authoring, ASD authoring its own kind of report card, um.
Can I bring up one more thing?
And then after, sorry, after, then we have Carl and.
There, there's actually two more things that I want to bring up as a, um, one of the things that, is that our own data dashboard, uh, wasn't in place when this originally started.
Mm-hmm.
And we have that system. The other thing that my staff brought to me, and I just remember this as we were talking, is that this is, the, the amount of work that this takes to go through and do this, we would have to choose what we were getting rid of in the work we're doing because it's extensive, especially for the assessment evaluation department, which is very bearable to me at this point.
Member Jacobs?
Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so, uh, to me, work, to me, this is kind of, kind of turned into an RFI conversation and a really good one. What I would propose is that, um, the committee ask administration, maybe in board docs, to review our current procedure and then fully bake a recommendation, whether that be to remove a policy that we currently aren't adhering to, um, to the level of specificity that currently exists, modify it to incorporate data that we already have, um, and are producing or really rebuild a new plane, um, and have our own different district, uh, school-based report card. Um, I think there is an intersection between deed data, what ASD is already doing, and maybe repackaging that, but I, I don't know that, doesn't sound like administration's prepared to discuss that today. So that would be my recommendation.
Other comments?
Yeah, if I might, Mr. Chair, I, I ca, I agree with Member, um, Jacobs. Uh, I think up until twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty, each school could, could link to the deed, to deeds, uh, uh, the deed site for their school report card. So I, I think we need to do a little bit more research because, um, I mean, I can, there's still a couple of, of, of our schools that still have their links up for their report card. Uh, it said, the, the, it was a service provided by deed. I, I don't know what that would mean for Anchorage, but I agree with the RFI approach to get more information so that we can, uh, make a better decision, we can understand better and then maybe proceed, um, based on that, uh, on that understanding. Thank you.
Putting myself in the speaking order, um, to the degree it reproduces what deed does, it, it does seem like ASD might want to have a page on their own site that may be quite a bit more user-friendly, that allows parents to pick out the two or three or four schools they may be looking at in our district without having to wade through. I, I remember going to the deed site and looking at schools. Um, and, and yeah, you're looking at the whole state to begin with. You have to skinny down and skinny down where the ASD approach may need to have a map of Anchorage so people can see where schools are at, be able to pinpoint those schools and maybe with a click, it would be has on that as well as things that we may want them to be aware of as well. Um, so in, in terms of putting this off to get more information, my question would be, who, who we put it off to? Numberless, and you may have ideas about what the best, if we, if we try to boil this down to be more specific about what we're gonna do, it would be good to do that.
I, I don't, I mean, the old, I think that, um, Member Jacobs', uh, suggestion for the administration reviewing procedures and making a recommendation is a viable and reasonable next step. We don't have the dollars for people to do the work.
Right.
We don't have the people to do the work.
Yeah, it's not a trivial thing.
Um, so, you know, what, what I like in my mind is not necessarily what's doable, but I simply, um, I think it does need more work. I think it needs a little more therapy sometimes.
And just so you're aware, we're at twelve-oh, and we have back to back meetings, so, yeah.
Oh, oh, thank you. Um. Does anyone have a motion on how to move forward?
Madam Chair, uh, I mean, um, yes, I, we're, we're absolutely out of time. So I recommend that we move the last two items to the next meeting or to the next, uh, whichever comes first, the next meeting or the next special meeting.
Um, given that, I'm, I'm gonna, because of time and the need to start the next meeting, I'm, I'm gonna pause because I don't have a good idea off the top of my head about what to do with the five-one-oh. Um, and say that we will put the remaining items on the next meeting of governance committee, whether it's a special meeting or a regular meeting in December, uh, unless there is objection, and then I will adjourn this meeting so that we can move to the finance committee.
No objections, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hearing no objections, that's what we will do. Thank you, everyone, for, uh, for all the discussion and helpfulness on this. Meeting is adjourned.